Good evening and welcome to the September 4, 2024, meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority. We'll call the meeting to order and I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Mayor, we'll start roll call with Vice Mayor Bernisconi.
Here.
Councilmember Albert, Councilwoman Madonza.
Here.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Here.
And Mayor Haldeshel.
Here.
Thank you.
You've heard me mention from time to time that I get the pleasure, and Councilwoman Rakuchi was with at our Northern California Water Association Board meeting earlier today. But little did I know that when I walked up to come to this council meeting, that somebody who I admire as a true leader in the agricultural community from Glen County would be here. And I would like to ask Larry Domeneghini, who served on the Willow City Council, served as mayor on the Willow City Council, and is a leader in the Glen County Farm Bureau, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Salute pledge.
And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Larry. And, you know, I said this at the NACWA Board meeting, I saw Councilwoman Rakuchi about 8:05 this morning, and I said, "I'll see you tonight." She goes, "No, I'll see you at the NACWA Board meeting. I love my farmers." So, thank you, Larry. I'm going to ask the clerk to announce the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Roseville City Council meeting and Housing Authority meeting tonight. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table to your right or online on the city's website. All comments from the public should be directed to our City Council and not to any member of our staff or the audience. All speakers must speak from the podium as this meeting is being recorded tonight. For items that are not appearing on the agenda, members may, members of the public may address the City Council regarding any item that is not listed on tonight's agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of our City Council. Public comment is limited to 25 minutes, and each speaker will have three minutes to make their comments. If the time limitation is reached in the first segment, individuals will have a second opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting just prior to council comments. The Brown Act prohibits our City Council from discussing, debating, or taking action on items that are not listed on the agenda. For those items that are listed on tonight's agenda, speakers will have five minutes to provide input that should be relevant to the item that is being considered tonight. Time will be monitored, and once the red light begins to flash at the podium, we request that the speaker please conclude their comments. The City Council encourages public participation, and we would request that all speakers please maintain the noise level down. Lastly, if addressing the City Council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. With that, thank you for your civic participation and welcome to the City of Roseville.
Thank you, Carmen. As, as our city clerk mentioned, we'll start with public comments for items not listed on the agenda. Going, going once, going twice. I thought Mr. Domeneghini, you were certainly going to make some comments. All right. Well, we'll close that, and there'll be a second opportunity later in the evening for public comments on non-agenda items. We'll next move to the consent calendar, and I'll request the city clerk to announce the procedures for approving the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion of our City Council. There will be no discussion on consent calendar items unless a member of the City Council, staff, or a member of the public requests that a specific item be pulled for further discussion. We've had no such requests from council members or the staff. However, we did receive a request from a member of the public to pull item 6.10 for further discussion tonight. At this time, we'll open the opportunity for any other member of the public to pull an additional item if needed. None, Mr. Mayor? We'll ask the City Council to consider consent calendar items 6.1 through 6.9 and 6.11 through 6.18. May I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernisconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilwoman Madonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshel.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item 6.10. So, item 6.10, Mr. Mayor, is City Council Boards, Commissions, and Committees Administrative Standards Update, and the request came in by Mr. Richard Wookmer to pull that item for discussion.
Mr. Wookmer, did you want to?
Mayor, Councilmember, Richard Wookmer, ironic citizen. I call myself that because of the irony of what happened in this very room in last meeting was not, the irony was not lost on me. Last meeting in this very chamber, you passed two resolutions, Resolution 24-305, canceling elections and disenfranchisement of Roseville citizens, and Resolution 24-243, which is forcing the youth commissioner to vote. You heard me right, in the very same breath, this council both took away the opportunity to vote for about 60,000 adult citizens and gave the right to vote to one unelected child. So, let's talk again, Resolution 24-294, which is, the reason I'm asking about that today, is that deals with the agenda item 610 in front of you. You gave the youth commissioner the full equal voice on the grants advisory commission. There's four things you cited, the first being, the California constitutional provision from 1879 was cited in the same agenda item that passed this resolution. However, I wanted to point, I can also cite the California Constitution from 1879, of which mentions that every male, every native male citizen in the United States, every male person who shall have acquired rights to citizenship under or by virtue of the Treaty of Corteno, and every male naturalized citizen, therefore, who shall have such 90 days prior to any election in the age of 21 years, shall have the right to vote. So, it's 21 years in 1879 when this was passed. Also, provided, no idiot insane person or person convicted of any infamous crime, and no person who thereafter convicted of the embezzlement or misappropriation of public money, which we're talking about today, shall ever exercise the privileges of an elector in this state, and also no Chinamen. Now, that was obviously for good reason changed in, later on in the California Constitution. So, let's take a look at what we have today. So, what we have today is, again, 18 years of United States citizenship and resident of California for voting rights. And we have that for good reason. One of the, the second thing that was mentioned, that the reason we want to give, empower this youth commissioner with voting rights was, will give, I quote, "This will give a sense of ownership for the work that they're doing for the city," which is good work. They're learning a lot about how money is provided, and I want to encourage that. But if you want a sense of ownership of the city's money and grant commission money, well, then you can just pay taxes instead. This will give you a real sense of ownership over the money that your government spends, maybe not in your heart or in your head, but in your wallet, where it really counts. The youth commissioner was mentioned, the third item was, scoring feedback was highly consistent with the rest of the commission. And I will point out that the entire commission is highly consistent. There are very few dissenting votes, if any, on the items that are passed, and also the items that are not passed. So, I would encourage the grants advisory commission, if they want another voice just to echo their votes, then go out and buy a parrot at the local pet store. At least then it will generate some tax revenue to offset some of the money you're giving away by the newest grant member. Look, I respect the current youth commissioner came up here to the City Council last meeting. I was impressed by her elegance as much as anyone else, and inspiring, she was given aspiring hope for the future. But this council's responsibility is not just to passively believe in the future. Your responsibility is to take actions to safeguard it today. And sometimes that requires making difficult choices today that will open the doors of the future tomorrow. It is the responsibility of every adult to protect our children, but to also allow them to grow up. A big part of growing up is making mistakes. And it is the adult's job to do our best to make sure that those mistakes don't cause permanent damage or hardship to anyone, including the child, while they are learning. So, I want to ask some, a few simple questions before you vote on this measure. A few simple questions and a few harder questions after that. The first questions I'll ask, are you prepared to not have a quorum of voting members because the youth commissioner doesn't meet the dress code? The quorum will change by making them a voting member. Does the youth commissioner know that their social media usage will now be legally restricted and subjected to violations of the Brown Act? Some harder questions, you, city attorney, are you willing to press charges on a high school student for violation of the city statutes and our charter? Roseville law enforcement, are you willing to arrest and fine a high schooler for failing to file their annual statement of economic interest in accordance with state law, potentially disqualifying them from future boards, commissions, and committee meetings? These seemingly innocent mistakes can be made by any high school as a part of growing up. But the difference is that this particular high schooler is now a youth commissioner and a co-equal commissioner member that must now be sanctioned and potentially bar, permanently barred from a more promising future. What kind of government body would do that? Finding the most prominent, up and promising, up and coming children, appointing them to positions of responsibility they're not yet writing for, setting them up for failure, and then banning and publicly scarring them so that they will not be able to left, they'll no longer be left to be challenged them on the council. So, for the high school students that are here, the answer to that rhetorical question is gerontocracy. That's a government that would do that. It's your vocab word for the day, and it will be on the test.
Well, I'd be remiss to say I didn't admire your, your passionate civic engagement. Are there, is there any other public comment on this particular item? Any questions from my colleagues?
None.
All right. Can we have a motion on the item?
Yes, one moment, Mr. Mayor. So, on item 6.10, the City Council will consider adopting Resolution Number 24-307, approving the City Council's Board Commissions and Committee Administrative Standards Update. With that, may I please get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Bernisconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Madonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshel.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We'll now move to ordinances and item 7.1, Roseville Municipal Code Addition, Temporary Memorials, and our Parks and Recreation Director Jill Geller and Deputy City Attorney Mai Tendone.
Good evening, Mayor Haldeshel and members of the council. I am Jill Geller, your Parks Recreation and Libraries Director, and with me tonight is Mai Tendone, our Deputy City Attorney. We are here tonight to discuss the first reading of an ordinance adding Chapter 13.14 of the Roseville Municipal Code regarding temporary memorials. The purpose of this ordinance is to provide the city, as well as the public, a clear and consistent process for addressing temporary memorials and ensuring public safety. Temporary memorials have occasionally appeared on city streetscapes, sidewalks, and corners for many years, and staff have never really known what to do with them or how long to leave them in place. We are certainly sensitive to and want to be respectful to those who are grieving from a tragic loss. However, without guidance, these memorials may remain indefinitely. And we do receive concerns from residents when they are there for a long period of time, as the memorials may cause a safety issue, or they may negatively affect the appearance of our public spaces when they're left unattended. We want to respect these residents' concerns as well. It's a delicate balance, as you can imagine, and hopefully this ordinance acknowledges and respects both perspectives. Additionally, memorials can create obstacles for staff or contractors, making it difficult to maintain our city properties. And currently, we don't have anything in place to provide guidance on the duration, the acceptable contents, and the safe removal or storage of these memorials. So, once again, the purpose of this ordinance is to allow the city to properly and safely maintain our public property, both with consideration for those who are grieving, as well as consideration for the safety of our general public. Mai Tendone has researched other jurisdictions that have adopted similar ordinances or policies, so I'll turn it over to her to share some of that information with you.
Thank you, Jill. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. As Jill mentioned, my name is Mai Tendone, and I'm a Deputy City Attorney with the City of Roseville. Before we get into the proposed ordinance, I do want to provide added context, which I believe is necessary and helpful for your consideration. There are a number of cities, and some of which you see on your screen in front of you, locally, within the state, as well as in other states, that currently regulate temporary memorials on their public property, either through a policy or through their respective municipal codes. Our office looked into a handful of these agencies' policies in order to get a sense of how they were regulating temporary memorials. And for the vast majority of these agencies, we noticed consistency with the types of issues that they were regulating. Specifically, as you'll see on the chart, they, the duration in which memorials were permitted to remain, the standards that were used to evaluate whether a memorial posed a safety concern, and the process thereafter to provide reasonable notice and, at some point, removal. You will see on your screen a comparison of some of the cities that we looked into and the standards that I just mentioned. This is not meant to be an exhaustive list of the cities that we looked into, but it is meant to provide you with a sense of what is currently being regulated, both at the local level and other parts of the country. You will see from this list that our closest neighbor, the city of Elk Grove, allows their memorials to remain for up to 30 days. Other cities, like the city of Stoughton, Wisconsin, allow their memorials to remain for up to one year. You'll also see that most of the agencies are consistent in what they consider to be unauthorized displays. In other words, displays that may result in immediate removal if they pose a safety risk. Lastly, you will see a range of time periods in which these agencies will remove and hold on to the items from the memorial, ranging from immediate removal and, to removal and storage for up to six months. Therefore, it is based on a thorough comparison of what other cities are currently already doing that we have proposed this ordinance for your review this evening. Next slide, please. The proposed ordinance addresses several issues, which I will discuss in turn. First, the ordinance establishes the duration in which a memorial may be placed on public property, and that is no more than 45 days from the date upon which the incident giving rise to the memorial occurred. In other words, it's 45 days from the date of the underlying accident. I do want to pause here for a second to reiterate a point that Jill had touched on earlier, and that is that we understand that this is a difficult and delicate issue. We recognize that grief and the process of grieving a loved one who has passed away should not be limited to a certain period of time. At the same time, we believe that it is important to have some parameter in place to maintain public property and to reduce hazards to the public. And the proposed 45-day period is actually more time than what many agencies currently allow. In fact, some of the agencies that we're aware of only permit memorial, memorials for up to two weeks. Other agencies allow up to 30 days. Secondly, the ordinance establishes physical restrictions to include no more than 30 inches in height, two feet in width, and one foot in depth. And this is primarily for safety and visibility reasons, as we don't want to potentially obstruct the visibility of motorists or prevent access through a right-of-way. These exact dimensions were actually taken from another city's policy, which incorporated these dimensions for the same reasons. Next slide, please. Next, the ordinance establishes standards for what cannot be included in a memorial. In the previous slide, I mentioned that, for the most part, memorials are permitted to remain on public property for up to 45 days. This section of the ordinance, however, would be an exception, exception to that 45-day period. And what that means practically is that if we determine a memorial has one or more of, of the following eight categories of content, the city may remove those unauthorized items prior to the expiration of the 45-day period. So, as you can see on your screen and in the proposed ordinance, there are eight general categories of unauthorized content. For the purposes of the slide, I've summarized it, but for what you have in front of you, the proposed ordinance does elaborate on these items much further. So, to summarize, temporary memorial shall not, one, pose a distraction to motorists, two, have flammable material that might threaten the surrounding property, three, interfere with routine maintenance activities, four, damage property, five, emit music or amplified sound, six, be permanently affixed to public property, seven, include or contain glass items, and eight, include any drug or alcohol or contain vulgar or obscene language or images. Next slide, please. Next, the proposed ordinance establishes at what point items placed at a memorial become quote-unquote abandoned property, which is after the 45-day period. And what that essentially means is that items then become the property of the city, and the city may, may remove it. Lastly, the ordinance establishes the process for removal. Specifically, we would provide at least five days written notice of any planned removal by posting a notice near the site of the memorial. And at any time thereafter, staff would then be permitted to store all non-perishable items from that memorial at our corporation yard for up to 30 days for it to be claimed if it hasn't already been claimed prior to those 30 days. Next slide, please. Okay, so what you see on the screen now is the chart that we previously looked at on Slide 5, but with our proposed ordinance or proposed standards that we just covered in red. I thought this would be helpful to visually see where we fall in comparison to other agencies. You will see that we are pretty consistent with what other agencies are currently doing. And in certain respects, our proposed ordinance actually provides more time and more notice than what other cities are currently doing. You will see that for at least three cities within California, three of those cities afford the memorial to remain in place for 30 days, and we are proposing 45. You will see that some of the cities in California deem the memorial, quote, abandoned, either upon placement of that memorial or after 30 days, and we are proposing that it be considered abandoned after 45 days. Lastly, you will see that three of the cities in California immediately remove the memorial upon the expiration date with no notice, and we are proposing at least five days posted notice. Next slide, please. So, in summary, it is our recommendation that the council introduce for first reading an ordinance adding Chapter 13.14 of Title III of the Roseville Municipal Code Regarding Temporary Memorials. Thank you for your time, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thanks for the excellent presentation. Questions? Councilman Albert?
How would staff start the, how would staff identify the start of the 45 days? Does that get recorded someplace? How do we?
It could happen a couple of different ways. We might be aware of the incident that occurred there, and so we would know when the 45 days starts. There may be times that we are not aware, and we just learn of the memorial by a resident notifying us or seeing us. So, then the 45-day period may start then. We can't guarantee that that 45 days will start on the day of the incident. That's the goal, but the memorial would be in place for at least those 45 days.
I do want to provide some context to that. I know that was a concern originally about how, you know, to what extent we would be able to identify that. In speaking with staff from our police department, we understand that, for the most part, our staff are pretty on top of being able to identify when an incident such as a fatality occurs within our city, just because it doesn't happen too often. So, when it does happen, unfortunately, at least our staff are aware of it and should be able to identify a date associated with that. But to Jill's point, in the event we can't identify a related incident, we would just go off of the date that we were notified.
So, so if we had a memorial appear 10 days, it actually was installed 10 days after the event, would we go ahead and back it up to the event date since we know that's when it happened? Okay. And I, I appreciate that because I know anniversaries, like the month anniversary, could be a really awkward time. The cities that chose 30 days or 60 days seems, you're picking an anniversary day. That could be really weird if there's family out there. I mean, it just, or if it's suddenly gone and they have a candlelight vigil or something. So, I like the 45 days. I think that's a good choice.
Other questions?
I had a question. I've seen signs in the past that were on street signs, like someone was killed in an accident on a street sign, and it says, like, Jane Smith, and, you know, the time and, like, talking about drunken drivers. How does this ordinance that we're looking at affect those, or what, how do you address that?
This proposed ordinance does not affect that. From what I understand, that program was discontinued a few years ago, so this proposed ordinance should not affect those signs.
Okay. And those other signs, there's no more?
Right.
Where it's discontinued?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is only on public property?
Correct.
Are there issues? Are there moments in which the line of public and private property sort of blur?
Potentially, but we did cover that, at least for on temporary memorials on private property in the proposed ordinance. So, in Section 13.14.080, we do discuss that temporary memorials on public property are not allowed to be there without the consent of the property owner. But in cases where it might be black and white, we would have to just work with staff to be able to determine to what extent that memorial is placed on public property.
You mean private property?
Well, public property would then allow us to be able to go and regulate it. We wouldn't be able to regulate it on private property.
Right. And so, if it's on private property, but it's within that, we have a traffic engineer in the house, you know, that line of sight, that triangle?
Yeah.
We would not be able to regulate that?
Potentially, we could, because if we go to the Section 13.14.020, it's actually the definition of, sorry, actually, it's Section 13.14.050. And this discusses the unauthorized and unsafe displays. So, for Section A, I'll just read it just for the convenience of everyone. Temporary memorial shall not create hazards to the general public, city personnel, or others, including but not limited to pose a distraction to motorists, obstruct sightlines for motors or pedestrians, including the clear vision triangle that you're referencing, or obstruct the free movement of motorists. So, that, that portion, it requires anyone reading the ordinance to refer to Chapter 19.95, which discusses this clear vision triangle.
Great. And if it does, there's some notification to them, and, and the clock starts. Okay, great. Open it to pub.
So, just question, the notice that we're going to put there, the five-day notice, if this is illegally stapled, pinned, taped to a utility pole or one of our light poles, we're not just going to stick a notice next to it, right? That's just, that's more garbage on our poles.
Correct.
Our code enforcement will rip that down, right?
Right, correct. So, under that same section that I was just referring to, we do talk about how the memorial shall not be affixed onto public property or damaged property.
I just want to make sure we're not adding more to what's already there.
Correct. So, to the extent...
So to the extent staff identify that and determine that it is an unsafe and unauthorized display, staff would be permitted to remove that particular unauthorized item.
Perfect. That's all I want to know. Thank you.
All right, I will open it for public comment and let the Oakmont High School stu... No, the Wood Creek High School students know there. It's extra credit if you make a public comment. What about other high schools? None? Okay. I'll close public comment unless the council has additional questions or comments on the presentation.
Do they get double credit if they stump the mayor?
I'll ask the city clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On that note, on Item 7.1, the City Council will consider introducing for a first reading an ordinance adding Chapter 13.14 of Title 13 of the Roseville Municipal Code Regarding Temporary Memorials. May I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilor Madonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci. And Mayor Haldeshell.
Yes. Thanks for an excellent presentation. All right, next, we will go to Item 7.2, Electric Emergency Operations Center Contract Purchase Agreement and Budget Adjustment. And I'll have staff make a presentation. Yes, for Electric Utility Director Dan Beans.
Good evening, Mayor.
I had Tom Pontus down here, too.
All right, yeah. So good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilors. I'm Dan Beans, your Director and CEO of Roseville Electric. Thank you for the opportunity to present our recommendation for our Electric Utility Emergency Operations Center. As we all know, by definition, emergencies are sudden, variable, and generally create chaos. In my previous position, I led my organization through a wildfire that caused mass evacuations in the city, as well as the loss of over 200 homes within the city limits. And sadly, there were also loss of life, including three firefighters. Seven months later, a 50-year snowstorm hit the city, causing power outages for over 30,000 customers, some for over a week. And then barely a year later, COVID became widespread globally. So as I experienced these situations and observed the facilities used for such occasions, it became clear to me that there was room for improvement. As an electric utility, the nexus between emergency management, reducing liability, and improving customer communications, as well as coordination among city departments and outside agencies, was clear. It's in our best interest to ensure the department has a state-of-the-art Department Operations Center and that it can be used as a city's emergency operations center if conditions So FEMA defines Department Operations Center, or DOC, and an Emergency Operations Center, EOC. So the DOC's focus is on the operational continuity of a specific department, while an EOC focuses on the strategic coordination of resources and responses across multiple organizations. This technology being proposed will be available for both functions and much more. So the current EOC for the city is actually located at the Martha Riley Library, and it does require a lengthy manual setup, which can take a few hours to deploy. It's also located in a less-than-ideal location from where staff normally is, so it requires extra travel time to get there from their regular work locations. And the current EOC also has limited technology. So the proposed electric DOC/EOC will be located on the first floor of the Roseville Electric Headquarters at 116 South Grant Street, just across the plaza. One significant benefit besides the location is the technology is always on, so staff can literally walk into the room, select a preset configuration, and immediately begin to collect and send information as the conditions warrant. Not only is this location convenient for city staff, but it has plenty of parking next door and would be readily accessible for external agencies who show up to work with us as conditions dictate. The ability to communicate detailed and critical information to the media, the public, and responding or affected staff will be revolutionary. So as part of developing the requirements for the equipment solicitation, electric staff met with other departments to see what additional opportunities existed to create even more value than just for emergencies. So when the DOC/EOC is not being used during an emergency, it will provide electric grid status information, large outage coordination, monitor infrastructure, security cameras, potentially wildfire cameras, and more. Then there are the many other potential uses, including training. It could be used as a backup real-time crime center or a backup traffic control center. It could be used for large public event coordination, cyber incident monitoring and response, public information dissemination, city-hosted public workshops, et cetera. There's a lot of... There's so many things you could do, I can't even list them all. So this is just a picture of the previous EOC that was built for the city of Redding. And next slide is a picture of that same room with a different wall showing the fire So as far as the procurement process went, last year, we initially transferred $750,000 for the project budget. In March this year, we issued a request for proposals. The proposals were evaluated with a team from Electric, IT, and Public Works Building Maintenance. In April, we held a job walkthrough with potential vendors, and this resulted in two bids being received that were very close in cost, around $1 million for the base options and a total of about $1.3 million with options, including extended warranties. The final selection was based on the scoring results from the proposal review team. The scoring in all categories were led by the successful vendor, based on their demonstrated experience and qualifications as a certified barco implementer, as well as understanding of the overall project. At the end of May, the successful vendor was notified pending contract approval by City Council. So the project includes two 24-foot-wide, six-and-a-half-foot display walls on the first floor and a one 12-foot-by-six-and-a-half-foot display wall on the fourth floor. It includes software and associated hardware. The overall project cost of $1.5 million includes the vendor display wall proposal that's in the contract being proposed to you, as well as third-party floor upgrades and some other miscellaneous work that has to be done to make it complete. The project is expected to be completed by the end of the first quarter of 2025. So staff recommends the City Council adopt Resolution 24-309, approving a contract purchase agreement by and between the city of Roseville and Conference Technologies Incorporated, DBA CTI, and authorizing the city manager to execute on behalf of the city of Roseville, and adopt Ordinance 6859 of the Council of the City of Roseville authorizing certain amendments to the fiscal year 2425 budget, and declaring this ordinance to be immediately effective as an appropriation measure. Staff requests council approve a contract purchase agreement with CTI for construction of the Roseville Electric Emergency Operations Center and approve a $750,000 budget adjustment to increase the existing Electric Utility Department Operations Center budget... project budget, resulting in a total spending authority of $1.5 million for the project. And that concludes my presentation, and I'll take any questions.
Questions?
One question. Just so we're all clear, can you talk about where the funding's coming from?
Department.
Okay. Not our general fund, but...
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You anticipated my question? Great. I'll open it for public comment, close public comment, and unless the council has any additional questions or comments regarding the presentation, we'll...
I have one.
Oh, sorry.
Being on a Northern California Power Association, which the city of Roseville is, and I'm the representative, we have opportunities to go to the many cities that are members. And so I've been to Lumpok and Santa Clara and others. I also had an opportunity to go to Redding and see this site and what it was like. It was being used at that time for... It was police and fire, but not an emergency. So you could see what is used in a non-emergency setting, and it was being used. And then they showed you what the issues were and when it was an emergency and how it was used, and it was really dynamic. And I think the fact that you can use this one room for so many things, it doesn't sit there in the closet and just sit. It's dynamic and can be used for the whole city and help a lot of people. Just a comment.
And, you know, and thanks for that comment, Councilwoman. You know, as I saw your slides of Redding, I was thinking, we as humans have this amazing capacity to recover. Last September, we had a heat storm that lasted for 14 days and was in triple digits and almost took out, you know, took out the California grid and things like that. So, you know, we're going to experience triple digits for a few days, but not like we had last year. And we had a shorter event in July of this year, but this is timely, so. All right, unless there's any other comments, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Item 7.1, the City Council will consider adopting Resolution Number 24-309, approving a contract purchase agreement by and between the city of Roseville and Conference Technologies Incorporated Doing Business, SCTI, and authorizing the city manager to execute on behalf of the city of Roseville, and adopting Ordinance Number 6859, authorizing certain amendments to fiscal year 202425 budget, and declaring this ordinance to be immediately effective as an appropriation measure. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Madonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshell.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thanks very much. Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. I am super excited about the next item. Historic Old Town Parking Lot Improvements Project Capital Improvement Project Approval Letter of Understanding and Budget Adjustment. And we'll have staff's presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Haldeshell and members of the council. I'm Stephanie Keeman, your Assistant Public Works Director, and I'm here tonight with Wayne Wiley, our Economic Development Manager, to present some exciting progress on a long envisioned plan to acquire property from Union Pacific Railroad in Roseville's historic Old Town District for the construction of highly anticipated at-grade parking.
It's not there, though, right? This is not the parking site.
Nearby, though.
Don't park there.
Tonight, we'll be recommending that the city council take the following actions. Approve a letter of understanding, or LOU, agreement between the city and Union Pacific Railroad, or UP, to purchase property in Roseville's historic Old Town for the use of parking. Approve a capital improvement project, or CIP, called the Historic Old Town Parking Lot Improvement Project, to design an at-grade parking lot for approximately 110 new spaces. And finally, approve a budget adjustment for $2.17 million of Strategic Improvement Funds, or CIF, to fund the acquisition of the property and design of the new parking lot. So for background, in 2009, the council adopted the downtown specific plan, which incorporated several different parking strategies, one of which was to create at-grade parking as an interim parking measure in lieu of garages were possible. The image on the screen is from that plan and shows a purple shape circled and red there directly north and west of UP's tracks in our historic Old Town. That purple shape was identified back then to be an area for proposed at-grade parking, public parking. It is currently owned by UP, and it is the subject of tonight's requests. Since 2009, we have met with UP on a number of occasions to discuss the proposal, and their operational ability and willingness to part with that property has been mostly supportive but also at times inconsistent. So in March of 2019, staff presented to council a request to approve an agreement with a consultant to begin the earnest negotiations with UP for the acquisition of this property. At the time, staff explained some of the background I just did, and also that there were still some unknowns then regarding plans to potentially use that area as a layover yard for CC JPA's Third Track Project. Our efforts with the consultant and UP stalled at that time, I believe, in part due to some of those unknowns. However, as council is aware, the Third Track Project has since advanced considerably, and this area is not going to be the layover yard. So in 2021, UP re-initiated discussions for the city to acquire most of the originally sought parcel, specifying a slightly wider setback from the tracks. Since that time, staff have done feasibility studies to ensure the area offered, which is shown in yellow, will still facilitate suitable at-grade parking with adequate access. We also completed an appraisal for the property, along with survey and engineering work to identify existing utilities and prepare cost estimates. All of that brings us to today. Staff have negotiated with UP on a letter of understanding, or LOU, agreement that outlines the following terms and conditions. Beginning with your approval and city manager's execution of the LOU, a feasibility period of no more than 210 days will commence, during which time the city will perform environmental audits, soil tests, additional engineering and feasibility studies of the property, and title review. Assuming those are satisfactory to the city, UP will transfer the property via quitclaim deed for an agreed-upon sale price of $800,000. The agreement puts some limited restrictions on the use of the property. Specifically, we cannot use it for residential lodging or educational facilities, for example. And we will need to build a fence separating the property from remaining UP land and railroad tracks as a first order of work when we begin construction. A closing will occur no later than March 31st of 2025. Upon closing and performing any necessary environmental mitigation on the site, design would begin immediately. Prelimarily, the site plan includes one ingress and egress point on the southeast corner of the lot and approximately 110 new parking spaces. We will be required to mitigate for stormwater runoff, which we have shown there on the north. And of course, if we are able to minimize that any further, a greater number of parking spaces may be provided. Staff will return to council in the future for project approval and authorization to bid, followed by approval of construction funding, which we estimate to cost approximately $3 million. And just a note that our acquisition and design estimate of the $2.17 million has quite a bit of contingency in it because we are so early in the process, and we wish to advance to construction phase quickly. Any funds not spent in this phase will be rolled into the construction phase and reduce our future requested amounts. Finally, I want to share how this acquisition and at-grade parking relates to and is being done concurrent with an update to the city's parking management plan, something for which council approved a budget adjustment to fund just this evening on consent. As noted in that staff report, an updated parking analysis is being led by your economic development team and is needed in the downtown and historic Old Town areas for a variety of reasons. As a part of studying feasibility, we contemplated and confirmed that this area is suitable for construction of additional parking by way of a parking garage if it is determined to be needed. On the screen is a rendering of a possible future garage in this location that could accommodate approximately 476 spaces in three stories. And with that, staff's recommendations, which I began the presentation with, are listed on this slide, and in summary, include approval of the LOU to acquire the property from UP, approval to create the new CIP project and complete the design, and approve a budget adjustment to fund the acquisition and parking lot design. Also, for the record, I have to note that soon after posting the agenda on... tonight's agenda online, we noticed an error on the date in the final paragraph of the LOU indicating our acceptance in June. With UP's concurrence, we changed that to September. That was the only change, and the council has provided the updated agreement already. So this concludes our presentation, and Wayne and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
Councilwoman Rucucci, any questions?
The apartments, are they scheduled or might be next to the parking structure, next to the apartments? Where would that be?
The...
The Belvedere, which is currently under construction.
So if we were to build a parking structure in the future in that location, it would be, yes, near to that, but there is a wall, a separation between this property and the Belvedere apartments.
Okay, so I wasn't sure if it was there or if it was further in, you know, closer to Pacific Street Cafe, you know, in that area, there's an apartment, the new apartments that are built there. So that, at one time, we were scheduling and looking at apartments in that area, so that's not it.
That is not.
It's by the Belvedere?
This parking lot would be located next to Boxing Donkey, kind of behind that business. And so there is a parking lot that the city currently leases closer to the Belvedere residential project that you're referring to.
But I guess my question was, they're talking about having a parking structure? Did I miss that?
No, so the property that we're going to acquire, so initially, it's going to be surface parking.
Right.
But what Stephanie was alluding to is potentially, there's the opportunity...
In the future, there.
To construct a parking garage.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Madonza.
Nope, thank you.
Vice Mayor Bernasconi.
A couple of questions. The intended audience, can you talk about who this is intended for and potentially what restrictions would be placed on the parking?
So it's public parking intended for the use of anybody to use when they're visiting our historic Old Town. I'm sorry, when your second question?
No, that's great.
And no restrictions, it should be public parking, open to the public.
And with your crystal ball, when would you anticipate this lot to be operational? We're talking a couple of years.
I would say, if we acquire the property in March of 2025, I would say a year later we could likely be constructing, so summer or construction season of '26, which feels very far away, but...
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Albert.
Do you have a photo that shows this lot compared to the public parking lot we're renting right now, just so you can kind of get an idea of the size difference? I didn't quite catch it in the slides.
So on the background slide, if they... So on the background slide, if they, if we can pull it up, we talked about the March 20th council meeting and show the yellow shape, if you have the presentation, you can see the parking lot there. There you go. So...
Full size of the existing parking lot they're showing?
I believe it's, it's a little bit, it goes a little bit further, but not, not by much.
Okay, so this is quite a bit bigger than...
I think it's probably, it's probably comparable in size when you factor in the need to mitigate for stormwater on the north side.
Okay.
Comparable to that.
There's a little bit less visibility back there. It's nice to have that fence against the tracks, you know, that'll benefit our people who park there. Are we going to have security cameras as well to try to just keep an eye on the area? Is that decided yet?
We haven't, I, we haven't had a discussion about cameras, but certainly we'll follow city standards for, you know, lighting and security and work with our planning department on, you know, what would be best back there in PD.
And Scott, just to kind of touch on that as well, we have downtown security that will make sure that they're aware of this location, and so they'll patrol that regularly.
And then the other question is, if we end up building a garage, the Belvedere will be impacted by that. To suddenly have a garage there as opposed to viewing of the tracks and stuff. Is there something with a zoning or something so they'll get notified right away so that there's not a later, hey, you never told us this was a possibility? I was curious how that happens, because I'm just envisioning what's going to happen in the future.
So, and I'll let Stephanie maybe talk to this, but with all public works projects, there is a notification process that they go through, and when you refer to like an impact on the Belvedere, it would be a positive impact because there'd be additional parking available. And I think that will come sooner than later, just with the surface parking that's going to be made available.
And then the last thing is just a comment. You know, I used, used to be very active in the downtown Roseville merchants for many, many years down here before I was on council, and this was a huge, huge priority for, for the businesses across the tracks on the other side. So I'm really excited we're, we finally got something going here where we can actually build a garage to help relieve all the stress. So, got it worked out. Thanks for working on it. I know there's going to be a lot of people who are very excited about it.
Yeah, this is one of those, I mean, you, you said 2009. I mean, this is one of those visions now a quarter century in the making, and we're coming to fruition, so. And I want to follow up on Councilwoman Rakucci's comments, and I know you will, so this is a bit of a rhetorical question. I couldn't find it, but I had gotten a request to attend a dedication of a roadway associated with the Belvedere. And the request came in May, and they were actually going to bring out one of the first female Union Pacific employees, an African American, and they were going to do a roadway somewhere around the Belvedere. So this is more of a heads up on that coordination. I never saw a layout or anything like that, but, you know, just, just a heads up on that. Okay. And Union Pacific, we have something signed by Union Pacific on the change of the date?
Yes, they confirmed in writing via email that that was okay.
Fantastic. Okay. We'll open for public comment.
Mayor, before, may I just, there's a couple of good questions that came up that I just want to give a little different perspective, because this has been a very long project and a lot of planning is one of this. And as mentioned earlier, the parking study will inform much of what we need to do regarding the long-term use of this site. But the other piece is, I think that the Belvedere, which is a great question, which will be going up, that side of the project is also designed for the storm basin, right? And so I think the conflicts that you guys were referring to, where you could potentially have a parking garage in the future up against that, I think we'll be able to mitigate that largely because that side of the property will be for the, the storage, storage basin to, to a large extent, so we'll be able to mitigate much of that. And, and I think the, the other piece, too, that didn't, didn't come up, which the parking, not only for the additional units down there in businesses, but we're also anticipating the Third Track and additional traffic coming from the Third Track, which is really one of the, the impetus for this site and going after this and the proximity of it. So this is very exciting. I think this is great for, for all of Roseville, downtown, Old Town specifically. And I want to just publicly thank staff for their long dogged determination and working with UP to bring this to fruition. So, good work, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we'll open for public comment. Okay, we'll close, close public comment, bring it back to the council. I do, I want to reflect what the city manager said. You know, Third Track is, should be here in 2028, increasing mobility options to both Sacramento and to the Bay Area, and so this will be a, a very sought-after project. I, you know, just also point out that we often do conditions, and when the junction crossing workforce housing project went in, one of the conditions in there was that they would allow parking between nine and five during the day because the tenants, the residents were not there. And we learned on our Denver study mission that multifamily is historically overparked, so you can, between nine and five, you can utilize those spaces, which if you go down the alley there between Fourscore and Pacific Street and just go to the back or come around, you can get to those. So this is an exciting day, and, and this is not this council. This is the vision of councils going all the way back to the downtown specific plan and entertainment district, and this is one of those key elements. So with that, I'll ask the city clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 7.3, the City Council will consider approving the establishment of a new capital improvement project, or CIP, of Historic Old Town Parking Lot Improvement Project, and adopting Resolution Number 24-311 approving a letter of understanding, or an LOU, by and between the Union Pacific Railroad Company and the City of Roseville, and also authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the City of Roseville, and adopting Ordinance Number 6860 authorizing certain amendments to fiscal year 202425 budget, and declaring this ordinance to be immediately effective as an appropriation measure. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Can I get a second? Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Senator Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haddashel.
Yes, thanks very much. All right, now, thank you very much for your presentation. We'll have a second opportunity for comment on, public comment on non-agend items. Again, extra credit will be given. Okay, Chris, all right. Then I'll ask city manager if you have any...
No further reports, Mayor. Thank you.
City attorney?
I have nothing. Thank you.
And I'll invite council members. Councilmember Rakucci, would you start us off with committee activities?
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned earlier, I had a, we had a meeting, you, that's where you work with, with Northern California Water Association, that they had a meeting, and they go to their different board members' areas and learn more about their area and then how, and conduct a meeting as well. And so this time, it was in the, it was at Heritage Growers Native Seed and Plant Supply, and this was in the Consumnis area and Calusa area, excuse me, Calusa. And that was really interesting. They actually raised seeds, and it was, I can't believe they had little plants, little seeds, big seeds, in this very old building and that it was, that was, that sifted through the plants and making sure that they actually were authentic and they didn't have any weeds or noxious weeds or any other plants in it. And they were, they, they, they're nonprofit, and they go to different areas that, that need natural areas like this, and then they offer, you know, the seeds. But I'd never seen that many seeds in large bags, and, you know, I'm asking the question, you know, can you buy at your local store? Many of us have gone in the little, in your store, and they have little packets, and, you know, it might be, it might be sweet peas or whatever, but I've seen it where it says natural flowers. But this, this is more on a giant grand scale, so they don't do things like that, but it's on a bigger scale, and how they're protecting the environment and working with many other, other groups to, for California, for all over California, and actually, they, you know, they talk to other states as well, but it's a process that you just don't see every day. And they're very much helping the environment, and we're talking about monarch butterflies, and they're kind of getting on a, maybe an endangered list, and how do you make sure that they have food that they need? And so it's quite interesting. It was, it's always interesting to go to the meetings, but, and they also talk not only on, on different entities like this, but then how the water needs throughout California and, and in their region, and what's, what's happening at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Mendoza?
No updates this evening, just one comment. Last concert in the park is this Sunday out at Royer Park, and if you are a Jimmy Buffett fan, it is the Garrett Wilkins and the Parrot Heads will be out there. Weather should be relatively nice on Sunday so far, so if you haven't had a chance to get out there and support that great community of people that do a lot of good for our community, I would encourage you to go out there, enjoy a free concert, support the local vendors out there, and get to know some of your fellow residents. So, thank you.
Councilmember Albert?
The only thing I have to report is just, we had kind of a combined meeting between the Placer County Economic Development Board and the Roseville Economic Development Advisory Committee at Kaiser. Kaiser is one of our largest employers in the whole city, and it's a BRE meeting, it's a business retention and expansion meeting. Just talking about, ask a lot of questions and, you know, how's Roseville working for you and what we can do to help? And the, the thing I wanted to mention, and I think this is, this always happens, it seems like, the comments about Roseville is so much easier to do business in, because Kaiser's huge, they're all over the place, and they're doing developments in many different cities, and they talk a couple of times about how Roseville is just the easiest place to work with, because the staff got it together, they get back with them right away. It's not these long dragged-out processes. So I thought that was, was really nice. They talked about their, they can always count on water flowing and electricity working in Roseville, and they can't always count on that every place else. And so I, I just was sitting there thinking, man, this city just does a really good job for these big businesses. And when they finish this big project they're working on right now, if you want to see the largest crane I think that's ever been in Roseville, go look over there on their site. It is huge. They will, when they complete that, it will be the largest Kaiser facility block in the world, so, for a little while anyway, while they keep expanding. So that'd be kind of neat. That's all I have.
Vice Mayor Bernasconi?
Yes, thank you. I feel compelled tonight to comment on an issue that is taking place in our community, specifically one of our neighboring cities to the north, Lincoln. The Gathering Inn, a program the city, our city supports, which operates a nomadic shelter in Roseville, applied for and received state funding to open a 100-plus-bed facility in the city of Lincoln to serve homeless individuals, which will be located right by two schools. While legally that the Gathering Inn did this without any communication to city officials or residents, I feel that it undermines a collaborative approach that we have with a business or an organization that run, that operates in our city. So while the Gathering Inn didn't need the city's approval, I believe they should have sought community input, and they did not. Lastly, I feel like it's important to note that I do not support legislation that allows this sort of development without working with the cities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Bernasconi. You know, we had a speaker earlier tonight, and I found it interesting that in the speaker's comments, he mentioned something about taking away the, the right to vote, but failed to mention that the action that the council took at our August meeting was a fiscally responsible action on the elections. Myself and Councilmember Mendoza were un, were unopposed or unchallenged. And in the process, the council made a decision to save $50,000 in, in election costs as a result of that, and I think I will side on the side of fiscally responsible actions all day long, so I just wanted to point that out. Councilman, Councilwoman Rakucci, we were in a beautiful building today. Northern California Water Association had its meeting at a place called Davis Ranch, which had this building that was built in 1852. And, and, you know, in addition to this just incredible brick building that sits out in the middle of nowhere, and I encourage those high school students who are still with us to get off the main highway and go on the country roads, because you will discover the heart of the economic development that has made California, the farming world, the charitable world. There's a place called, there is a Carnegie Museum in a place called, on Blue Gum Road? Am I got that right? Blue Gum, which is north of Willow's. Most incredible architecture in the center of Calusa and other cities throughout California, but, communities, small towns in, in California. But we were in a place, Davis Ranch, and, and they began a hedgerow project, so agriculture is also conservationist. Tomorrow is SECOG Transportation Committee meeting, and with that, I think we're adjourned until September 18th. All right. Thanks, everybody.